It is Monday, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four at the Susan Tully Livesley Boardroom of the eighteen eighty seven building. Uh it is seven thirty P M and um. Mister Tadlock, will you call uh do a roll call, please?
Yeah, uh Mister Andre is excused for the moment. Uh Mister Gaylord?
Here.
This uh Eric Gordon?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mrs. Kostak?
Here.
Mrs. Reckless?
Here.
Mister Scarrow?
Here.
And the student reps are excused.
Okay, we do have a quorum and this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. I did, I circumvented it. If that's okay?
Can I circumvent that we go to the recommendations for them?
Yes, let's do that. I do we need a motion to uh change up the order? Or can we just?
Make a motion that we change the order moving item six to item five?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, one second, I gotta note that.
Do I need to amend that? I found us in room five to six? So that we don't just drop it off before our agenda?
Oh, we change the order?
It was intended.
We're wanting to review the personnel sheet first.
Yes, yes.
Then you're needed.
Thank you.
All right, um. This is the personnel sheet and the recommendations um. For the board, so these are positions that were posted internally and we've gone through that initial process, of course, this will create, you know, dominoes and some of those other sort of.
Pardon me?
We'll have some other transfers, I anticipate. Like to appoint uh Jess Reining uh to the options principal um position and the uh Ben Salbera would like to transfer to the associate principal position at Jackson. Uh this year he started as the associate principal at Westside and was working in between Jackson and Westside. Along with Cindy Rebert, who would like to point to the associate principal at uh Westside for next year. Sinta Holmes um met with Kelly, she would like to transfer and fill the uh position that was vacated by um John.
Watson.
Watsons. Uh yes, John Watson, who went to Gateway at the beginning of April. And she was very excited about that. Um Chad Stoltz um like to transfer to the high school to fill a position that was formerly held by Mister Wolf.
Where is Chad Stoltz now?
Middle School.
At the middle school, yeah. Uh Daniel Vito, um he has officially submitted his retirement. He served as the Tibbetts custodian. Um unfortunately, he's um in the last stages of battling cancer and we wish him and his family the best. Um Dan was a very bright light that shone for a short time at Tibbetts, but I know they really enjoyed having him there. Um we have the retirement of Nancy Bruegger as a Tibbetts teaching assistant. The appointment of Megan Fitzgerald, previously worked for us. Um left for a year, came back as a long-term sub this year, filling in family consumer ad and um would like to appoint her to that family consumer ad position for next year. We have the appointment of Deborah Peterson as a high school coach.
Cook.
Coaching how to cook. And then Noel Rinaldi and Melvin Coecroft uh stepping down as the cheerleading. Um as a note as well, it's not indicated on the transfer sheet, it's just a reassignment. Uh Mister Troyer will also be working uh with options as part of his duties and overseeing the the growth and strategic planning of that and onboarding students at options as we make a big push to increase that role there.
And then we talked about Santa's position. Um were we still thinking that that some of those were gonna, some of those tasks would be filled by?
Yeah, so um it's speaking with Mary Troyer as our district nurse and I think she's done a great job really building the capacity of our health aides. Oh, when the pandemic came, I believe we increased their hours slightly in the health aid positions and she has a a really good team there and she actually approached and shared that she would like to you know, with that district nurse head, assume was uh greater responsibilities related to the community health portion, which is a part of what um district nurses, school nurses are trained in, that's part of their job and their role. So we do plan to have her assume some of those responsibilities and roles that were vacated by Santa's transfer over. Santa's position will also allow her to still be in contact and touch and certainly be a part of the resiliency coalition and help with that. But Santa was also very excited about that new opportunity and in which is working within her field in which she has her background in as well. So I looked at it as a real, you're always nervous when approaching or reaching those subjects, so I was very pleased to see that there was excitement.
But to be clear, we are not um going to be refilling that position that she's vacating.
That would certainly be a decision of the board. That's what we currently have in the budget plan. Um that would also be the board's prerogative, but so not fill that position from that full-time piece. Part of it would transfer over to the district nurse, so there would be a reduction in funding, um and that we have a full-time position there now. It'll go to a part-time um encompassed within the district nurse position.
Okay.
And I, from our conversation, I I believe that's what for the board.
Okay. Uh looking for a motion to approve their recommendations of the district minister.
I'll move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, including no employment contracts, district fund passing, background check, district district mandated drug screening as presented.
There a second?
Second.
Uh sorry. Um it's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, including no employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check and district mandate mandated drug screening as presented. Um all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go now back to uh the report or to review the draft of the potential community survey and general budget discussion.
All right, I did share this link and I gave all the board members edit access to the document, so be careful. Although it's a Google Doc, we can go back and undo anything. And Katie did not give us the original version, she just made a copy.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, so we can uh
I have some notes.
Modify this changes however the board would like. Again, we just um yeah, took a stab at it in cooperation with everybody else based off of what we've seen out there in other community-based surveys with the intent. And I will say it's very verbose, it's hard to make things concise and capture things concise. You'll see a lot of the language is similar to the language we used in the Community Connection.
Correct.
In large part because I found that people need to see things multiple multiple times for it to
Sure.
Say again.
I'm just getting rid of my paragraph something and I will write that down to notes.
But no feelings will be hurt in this matter, so however you want it. So I wanted to be a tool, something that the board is comfortable with sitting out, assuming the board wants to move forward with sitting out, so yeah. I was, I've been deliberating over this. The first part it's like a long Facebook post and you see a long one, you go, I'm not gonna read it.
Yep, yep.
But to be honest with you, it explains everything that you need to know. I don't know how you can shorten it to the point where, you know, you give them the information and then you get to the survey.
Um so Ed took a really close look at this and I don't know, did you only email it to me?
I just sent you.
Okay.
Just just to talk to the public for them, but.
Yep, so he emailed me a recommendation of you know, how he would like it and it's more of a refocus of what the survey I think, it isn't more of a refocus of what the survey and the purpose of it is. It feels too much like what was in the Community Connection. So I think that if people read the Community Connection and then see this survey, they're gonna be like, oh, I've already read this, I don't need to do this, and they're gonna ignore it. What we would like, I think Ed and I are on the same page on this, we would like to see a a refocus to be more concise with the information. Um still using a lot of what you have, but in a more concise way and emphasizing more of the recommendations that the Ad Hoc Committee made um.
Do you have like a rewrite?
Yeah, you guys.
Can we just copy and paste this?
Well, I only made my edits on paper, but yes, yeah.
So all of you have edit rights if you just go in, copy and paste it at the top?
Let me uh forward the email that Ed sent me.
And I would say ninety-five percent of what you see is right out of what
Correct.
was what's already been created. I just kind of put it in different.
Correct.
Be easier to look at if you had hard copies of that for them?
Um I think if you just put it, if he
I just sent it to Jason. And then uh yeah, I on a whole, I think the focus is more where we need it to be. Um because this, I it's a little bit of a delay. I feel like the survey needs to be a marketing piece.
Well, it's 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 not not so much a
Maybe not, maybe.
It's it's kind of like, it's our elevator speech about really kind of what we've gone through and what we're going to uh how we're making a decision for our community. And so it's important for us to get to
Get to the point.
Just get to the point.
Point, I, yeah. One of the notes that it wrote down here said we had, you know, the survey said we want you to share your, share your thoughts. We list eight questions, only two of them had to do with the survey, with with the actual meat of it, so.
Well, probably the
I mean, and I get the demographics are important, I'm sorry, Jason, didn't mean to touch on. I I I understand that the demographics are important. What needs to get mismatched out of that?
I I think that's a good point. I, the the most positive feedback that I get on any of my communications that I send out is my bottom lineup.
Yep.
Yep.
Because people read that, they like it and they don't, you know, but if they want to, they can go and read the other piece. There's nothing in here that just
Right.
Gives that.
So the, on the closing the gap, I just kind of reworded that to make it um, it's a combination of items that are being cut as well as new revenues for a net effect to the budget. Um just to make that clear. Um you know, the reoccurring operational rec- that's that's a recommendation from the committee. Um the debt service prepayment, I think we all understand this. Um and then why why it's important to maintain the fund balance, liquidity, that it just, it's, you know, a lot of people look at that and they don't understand why do you need so much money?
Right, right.
Um and I didn't spend a lot of time, well, how much is it? Well, it's not, that's not pork. I mean, um what's important is you know, getting into the next, how, well, why why we, why did this happen?
Right, why are we in the position that we're in?
And trying to explain that very quickly, um how we got here and that the fact that the states basically said, hey, we've said it many times in our in our public forums here. Local representatives represent what's that represented this area. They're very clear, if you need more money, go to your constituents and that and and I'm, I'm I'm kind of clever guess at that statewide or isn't it a big war of an uproar? Um but I don't see any of that changing, I assume. So we gotta focus on our immediate needs and um and that's why I get right into, okay, the referendum dollars that um I have there are are different than what we've been talking about and as I mentioned, the bill, it'd be nice for us as a group to run through some scenarios. Um and then, okay, how does it affect me? And I'm breaking it down much more simply um by a hundred thousand property value and then I'm going, okay, you're in a thousand dollar home. Okay?
Yep.
It's more than twenty-three, what's more than, you know, and
But these are real numbers that people can easily look at and easily understand.
I mean, I
Yeah, and I think we need to do that.
Yeah, we need, we need, we need to have them accurate and very clear so that somebody can, you know, say, well, oh, it's gonna be, you know, a thousand dollars a year or whatever. We want to have the facts clearly stated as best we can project them for our community members, so.
These, these numbers aren't accurate.
That's correct, they are not.
He knows that, he just stuck some numbers in there.
Yeah.
All right. I wish that was it.
Right.
There you go, Bill. Got your morning plan, Bill. Yeah, the the point, the point of it is, is that like the thing, like the fund eighty change, I don't know whether that's part of our newest projections. Um I wanted us to possibly look at uh what the healthcare percentages were, those are some big dollars.
Sure.
And the the point, the point of it is, is that when we look at these projections, um that's just what they are, they're projections.
Right.
You know, we want to keep them honest and and as best the, to the best of our abilities to project them. But the point of it is, is that when we focus, you know, we made the decision to focus on waiting for our teachers and staff. Um well, maybe we want to consider not using ten percent for healthcare, maybe we want to use something less. Whether that's five or six or seven, I I I don't know. Um but I I I do know, actually, three years from now if healthcare costs are going up twenty-five percent, we're not gonna be able to absorb that.
Right.
Um and and the hard decisions are gonna be, are gonna be made then. Um we don't think that's gonna be the case. We think we're gonna have some upside, we talked about that. So I'd like us to say, oh, I think we're gonna have some upside because of the changeover that we made. Well, let's show that in our projections. Um I also wanted us to consider, okay, let's try and, you know, catch up the salaries, okay? Uh where is that gonna come out of? It's gonna come out of the healthcare. Um so let's play with those numbers and it's a huge, it's a huge spreadsheet that Bill has developed. It's not something he can just hand me the the wheels to and I know I'll, I'll crash into something, so. You know, so I I just thought it would be helpful to kind of work through some of those. And then the other thing was questions for the survey. Um like I say, I have those at the end there. Um wanted to 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 re, this is what we're coming up with now, which is important. Yes or no? I mean, and um you know, talk a little bit about um increasing class size. Uh talk a little bit about increasing time for the bus routes, because we're gonna decrease routes potential. So those are some of the things that we talked about as a committee.
Do you want us to to put more in there?
More questions?
And along goes lines, because I think it it does allow us to, twofold, one, it highlights some of the strategies that the committee discussed.
Correct.
And two, it kind of gives a precursor to what we might be facing if it doesn't happen.
I I like it from that aspect.
Yeah, and two engages the the public interest in that. So for example, other pieces that were discussed. Overwhelmingly, the Ad Hoc Committee didn't like it, but I don't see any way around it if you're going to reduce staff and that's using the center school model in K through five. Uh I don't like it, I don't think it's a great model, it's a lot of transitions for kids, but I think the community needs to know that that's why Delvin went to it in part, was it's more efficient. When you put all the teachers and the staff at K two in one building, you put all the, you know, or K one, two, three, four, five.
Right.
Um eliminating transportation within the city.
Yeah.
Which was one of the things that the Ad Hoc Committee discussed. I mean, we have a whole slew
Right.
where we could put those in there as question. I kind of like that because they know that we've looked at these.
No.
Yeah.
For giving your feedback.
And and as I just put my list of questions together, it was kind of the school um you know, reducing the school busing in, you know, inside the city of Alcorn. Um I I know that we get a lot of outrage, so I I kind of wanted to avoid questions that just were, were not productive. Um as as productive as it can.
But I, but in in reality, if we're four million short because we don't have a referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's that's why we're, we're as a group doing it, not just.
One, one thing that I I don't think that the public really has an understanding of is so you have a whole pie, seventy-five percent of that pie is employee costs and salaries and benefits. So really, without cutting programs, without cutting the educational experience in terms of teachers and
Cutting staff.
Without cutting staff, without cutting staff. You only have twenty-five percent of pie to work with in terms of cutting. Bill, what is that total dollar amount of the twenty-five percent?
That would be discretionary.
Yeah, what what is that total? Do we know?
Well, the budget is probably right around fifty million.
Okay.
That's forty-two million.
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty, I'm I'm terrible at answering that. What?
Forty-two million, because they, wow, so.
No, I want to know what the twenty-five percent is. I'll get my calculator out.
Yeah, it's, but of that twenty-five percent, there's a lot of that that's fixed costs, like the electric bill and gas.
Right.
The abilities.
The, we have no control over.
Right, and it's so you're
I think it's less than five million that you could look at as truly discretionary, like curriculum budgets.
So that would be like
Photocopy, paper.
Budget, probably be posted. And we're eventually going to be more than five million dollars in arrears if
Correct.
we don't go to referendum. So we don't have we can't, it's not even possible.
You can't get there.
You can't get there without a referendum.
And and there's usually a ratio you want on that pie so that the personnel doesn't become ninety percent of your operation, because you don't have any resources to do anything then.
Correct.
You really don't, so. And some districts have gotten to that because that's the piece they keep attacking is that five or ten percent and there's once that's gone, there's really
There's nothing left.
Yeah.
Not not to get off track here, but just to share with the board, the other scenario I ran just hypothetically, say, let's assume the board decides to go to referendum November and that is not successful.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I was thinking.
The next opportunity then would be April twenty-five. And there's no fall election, so then it's April twenty-six, but in April twenty-five to kind of get to the same dollars overall for a four-year, you're now looking at a three-year. And you almost have to double up that first year, so suddenly you would almost come back with like a three-point-six the first year and then a one-point-eight or one-point-seven.
Right.
Which people are not, you know, how do you understand that from a public standpoint? You just increase the amount and so.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I I don't want to dwell on that, but it's kind of like
It's, it's a great example of why we need to do it right.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Yeah.
It sits us on pork for us to um work together to tell a simple story and
Right.
and I want to say, cut to the minimum of what we need. I mean, I I we don't want any fluffiness, we need to cut it and be as efficient as we can um to minimize the impact.
Part of that story that I think is critical is understanding that we've been cutting
Yeah.
for a decade.
Correct.
Shame on you guys, no, just kidding.
Right. Really? I I and and to be perfectly honest, Ed, I don't, I question myself on that all the time. It's, and and it was calculated in the sense that I don't want to come across as the little boy who cried wolf.
Right.
Because if we go out every year, we're a million short, and then create this perception of, well, yeah, this is the same thing you say this every year. And we did figure out how to get there, but yeah, shame on me in the sense that there wasn't a great sense or understanding that this is a building.
Yeah, and we got lucky. Doesn't mean it's gonna always happen.
Well, I I think, I don't know that
I may be lucky.
Right, we've, we've, you guys have done an amazing job of getting us to where we need it to be every year. But what the public doesn't know is how much you've worked to save the district money. Um through refinancing, through, you know, all the methods that you've used, at least over the last six years that I've been on the board. Um the public doesn't know that. They just know that all of a sudden we're coming to them for money. And they don't realize how close we've been in the past, you know, six years to not getting there, but you've worked really hard to do it and
And this link is embedded in in the survey, but that'd only be available for those who
Do it online.
Do it online.
Right.
Yeah, I just, that information is great, but out of my personal feelings, no one's gonna look at it, nobody cares.
Very true, yeah.
They just don't care. I mean, you're, they're just saying, you're doing your job. Thank you for doing your job.
Right, well, where it will be helpful is the, I don't know, social media warriors or whatever, when someone's like, well, the district's been responsible, why didn't they make cuts?
Yeah, yeah.
And someone could then say
Yep.
here's what they've done to the last thing.
Yeah, but I think we can have that information in our back pocket.
Yeah.
And, you know, and maybe make those things as part of the social media campaign. You know, here's what we've been doing and and you know what I mean, like bring a new one out each week, you know? So I don't think that people are gonna take the time to read it in the survey.
We're, yeah, but I mean, is there any other questions that 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 anybody maybe noted down that?
Well, if we're gonna do these type of questions, I I would like to go back to that list that the Ad Hoc Committee had and I I just had a hard time just picking out a couple of them. I think it's, we either kind of list, you know, I think there were what, ten to fifteen strategies?
Yeah.
And and pull them on those or, I don't know, that's just my thought. Or I don't know if
Guess for for me, when I looked at the questions, those are gonna be like, if if the referendum doesn't pass, this is what I know we're gonna be looking at first.
Right.
Is what, is what I was thinking when I was doing, listing them all myself, so. Um.
Sure.
I don't know if the class sizes to thirty or thirty-five is is where we would have to be.
Yeah, I
Is it, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, well, just figure in the first year, next year would be a four-million-dollar shortfall. So presume that we, the board's wanting to get to four, I often, is that correct, Bill? Four million?
For for next year.
Yeah, say the board softens and says, well, we originally were planning on using some fund balance anyway. And we were just looking at mitigating two-point-five million of that. So but to get to two-point-five million, if an average between support staff, teaching staff, administration, if you figure around a hundred thousand dollar per position you're in, you know, most of that cost has to come from the position, you're talking twenty-five positions. Um so you're looking twenty-five positions throughout the district, and we're really struggling to come up with three. Even this year without
Right.
bumping, just to give you an idea, the three that if we we look at will have an impact of shifting class sizes at the grade levels of that potentially happens at from about twenty-one to twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I think we should describe that as a question.
So that's just three positions. If you're talking twenty-four, we tried looking at, can we collapse a social studies position?
Right.
At the high school, because it's one of our larger departments.
Yeah.
We could collapse it for a year, because it was Mister Scott Root's position.
Right.
That would have required us um pushing Bosch in to teach two classes, pushing Handle in to teach two classes and patchworking it for a year because of the way the certifications were. And so it just doesn't, when we're looking at it and the feasibility, it wasn't terribly, so you're talking massive disruption.
Okay.
Yeah. And doing it, it's it's across the board. At the middle school, the way that schedule's set up because we did do attrition of six positions there, one from each team my first year here. Um you have to do it that way, so you would need to do attrition of six, you know, one more from each team. So you'd have to go six positions and then bump the class sizes from a divisor of six to five. Um yeah, it's, it's I would say thirty, then you're probably looking in some sections forty to fifty. Forty to fifty, which we did have P E sections at the middle school, with fifty kids when I first got here. Um, and we tried to mitigate that, cause that was, you have a hundred fifty kids in P E at the same time, half the grades. Yeah. Um. So anything is possible, it's just I don't, people would not recognize the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like Kevin said, we'd have massive accidents.
Well, then, which hurts us even more. Yeah, and then what does it do on a learning le- on the learning level? And all of a sudden, you know, we go from this top-notch, highly-ranked school to. You know.
Yeah, and and you're gonna have Friday, teachers are feeling stressed already.
Right, 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 I mean, and I know there's there's no ideal. You know.
Then then let's let's regroup and say what, well.
But but that's, but Ed, I don't think that's inaccurate, uh, for.
Okay, I yeah, I was just wondering, is that what we're.
Yeah, I mean, so. Okay, we're, we've got the upfront here, we corrected the numbers, we fine-tuned the numbers, we show them exactly what it's gonna cost, we ask them some questions. What are what are we gonna get out of it?
Yeah, what's what's the endgame?
Let let's say, for example, I look at that, and I think, yeah, you know, I went to school out in Utah, at the time, and Utah was the lowest spending in the nation. And I didn't have any less than thirty-four per class, you bet, but thirty-five, I turned out fine. I don't know how many.
I don't know.
I wouldn't answer, but what do we do if it comes back over wrong, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Push them to thirty-five.
I would someone say, would you have to cut staff, cut everything but teachers?
Yeah, then we'd have massive attrition of teachers, cause you have no support staff.
Right.
Can we, can we ask some demographic questions? Like. Um, which one describes you best? Parent of a student. Um. Elkhorn taxpayer, Elkhorn School District taxpayer.
District, yeah, so resident taxpayer.
Yeah.
These these were common ones that were done at the bottom.
Okay.
Um, age, primary residents in Elkhorn, that gets to whether you're.
Yep.
Um, are you an employee, do you have children attending the district?
Okay.
Do you receive school district much? Those are, and those are common questions in the surveys we saw, cause then you can disaggregate it based on those.
I think most of the survey examples we we looked at, they didn't have many questions, if I remember right.
They wouldn't, no.
But I don't know if that was on purpose, or they just didn't.
And what was what was the co- cost of the cost for this? Well.
This is free, oh, five thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's probably closer even to four, or maybe three or four, if we're doing it ourselves, which I think is the intent.
And we're doing it as one of the, within that community connection budget.
Yeah. I don't know, I I could say, I think we deliver. The the, I'd like to see us delivering the message that really is gonna be the consistent message for the rest of. Our discussions about how we're moving forward. Uh, as to me, I think we we've gotta start getting to. A concise. Good message that gets the point across of why we're doing what we're doing, and how much it costs us. Cause I I think at the end of the day, uh, I think people wanna have a good school district in the community they live in. But they just wanna know how much it's gonna cost them.
Yeah. I think you did a good job of capturing that, the, I always, I like when things are. Bulleted or remembered, like you had one, two, three, right?
Yeah.
I personally like that, is this question, like you said on the number one? I thought that that's what this question was.
Yep.
But it, does that work for what you're suggesting for question number one or no?
I, because of how how it's worded, it's hard, I think, for people to see, and so if you just. If you break it down like.
Like each year and show.
Year, and then it's easier for them to say, oh, it's a phased-in approach.
Right.
You know.
I really like how you laid that out.
I mean, it just takes up more space, but it's so much easier for them to hone in on and.
Right.
And they'll, they're gonna remember it a little bit better than having to read a paragraph.
So you're saying, let's space it out like that.
Yeah, just like that, I mean, verse is all written in a.
Right. Rather than a paragraph form.
Well, that's the shortfall, okay, we. Where's the?
Would you put her next to those numbers, cause when I'm reading that, again, maybe I'm looking at. Wrong, but if you jump up a little bit, Jason, you're. Is I see it as one-point-five in year one, one-point-six year two, one-point-sevens.
Yep.
That's how I'm looking at.
Yeah, no, it's three-point-one.
I I know.
That's the smokes and mirrors.
Shortfall, that we need to update this to whatever. But the referendum's question, you would want it laid out like this, but with the actual dollar amounts.
Okay.
That the ad hoc committee recommended.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is the uh, one-point-seven, then one-point-seven, then one-point-eight.
And and for me, what's more impactful for the the general public is, well, what's the tax impact?
Right.
Cause it, cause the person that 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 doesn't pay real estate taxes.
Right.
Could care less.
Right.
I hope yes.
Yeah.
You know, um, and that's, that's not, you know, we want them to be engaged, but. That's what they're focused on, they wanna know that it's gonna cost me X dollars more than not paying right now.
Right.
And we just gotta say that very plainly and.
That's, you know.
I just hope, as easy as we can explain it.
That's one of the comments I I I noted here is, make it understandable, simple language, not to dumb it down, but to get away from the lingo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've been, right, you've been, I've been sort of uh, living and breathing this lingo for a while.
Yeah.
And it's not the common parlance for most people. It's it's just not. So, yeah.
Right.
Said, um.
Yeah.
This isn't anything we need to decide um, tonight by any means, um, it's just. How we get us.
Well, I I thank you for doing that, I really like how you laid it out, and um. I think we just need to tweak some sentences there, but for the most part, it's it's really good.
But how how do we as a as a group hone in on? Kind of like the final numbers. Bill, you got a feeling for? For that?
The final numbers?
Well, I mean, as final as as fine, you know.
I mean, right now, I'm I'm assuming the board's gonna go forward with the recommendation from the the financial stability committee, so using that. And what we talked about with the compensation for this year.
Yeah.
It assumes the health insurance increase of about four percent would consist, but in the future years is future years, I think.
Yeah, okay.
We could put in ten or eight or six.
Right.
But we don't know what inflation's gonna be, I mean, all those are variables, and you start going into the future. The other thing, I try to line up is is our debt payoff schedule to match up with that, so that the. The impact for our taxpayers is relatively constant each year, you know, we looked at that twenty-four thousand.
Right.
Um. And if the board's still comfortable with that, I've already talked with Barrett putting that together, so at the next board meeting. We'd be taking action on paying off some of that debt.
Okay.
Great.
So that part of it will be coming, I guess, to reality fairly quickly.
Okay.
Um.
So we we can continue to. I mean. You said we wanted to get this out towards the end of May?
Yeah, so if we want that out the end of May. I, we can take this feedback, have Katie rework it, I just whack a bunch right there, because. Taking kind of that template that you outlined in the front, we have Katie rework it, and then. Um. Push it for feedback, it would almost be easier if there was like a Jezza needed. Three, so we don't have a walking core making a decision on it, even though this is, it's more of a print piece, and then we could have that. Smaller group. Communicate via email related, that this looks good.
Yep.
So that we can get it out to the press, I just think waiting till the first board meeting in. May, which is until the. That would bump it going out first part of June, I mean, if that, if we're okay with getting it. You know, that end of May, first part of June, then that's fine, we could still do a final review on the thirteenth and send it to the press. I don't see how that really impacts us getting. I mean, that still gives us plenty of time before July to make a final decision. Um, if we're given the the two weeks, even if we leave the survey window open all the way through June, we would have the data first part of July.
Yeah.
Did, do we have a deadline in there? I'm sure, assuming we do.
Yeah, that was.
Is there some negative, once the bell rings, the school's out. And then have them complete a survey, people kinda, I think what you even said, they called them school for a while, so I think the school survey seems. Ideal would be almost before school's out, wouldn't it, or does it? I don't know.
It would, but then again, I think where some of the other surveys that were done recently, and the districts were surprised by the results. Was because they were more heavily tilted towards probably parent participation and so forth, anyway. Because like, you know, like Geneva, the data that they had was their referendum should have passed early long. But I think they probably had a higher percentage of. Parents completing the survey as compared to community members, community members, I don't think it's gonna make a difference. Whether it's. In a May or.
That is true, that is true, yeah. Yeah.
Um. I think Julian mentioned a good point of. Social media, we need to use that, whether it's our own, I don't know, digital platforms or.
Kind of for the for the other points that aren't part of the survey, but are supporting messages.
And hey, don't forget, this is coming out in mail, we turn your surveys, you know, just that simple message as well.
So so I'm clear on direction to get to Katie, we still want the demographic questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And then. Um, we're still gonna do the question number one, but we're gonna format it into more of this type.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Structure right here, but reflecting the dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, um. How do we want additional questions? Do we want some of the the budget-saving strategies, and if so, limited to what number? Are we just wanting those two, or do we wanna incorporate some of the others that were suggested, like shortening the school year? Um. Going to a four-day school, or, I mean, there's a whole slew of.
Yeah, I I think um, I think more than just the two, um, I certainly not all of them, but. Yeah, maybe three or four.
Maybe what we could do is.
They have to.
Put them on the list, and then if we wanna have a subcommittee.
Yeah.
Review it, and narrow down, what are your favorite?
And what would you do, would you have a positive on? What things would you support? Or negative, and what would you be willing to get rid of?
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you could do it that way, where you, like, what what of these things would you be able to support, check all that apply?
That's a good question, because I I had. The reason why we put this one in here was I saw a lot of pushback. Running up to the election from people in the community, they were like, wait a second. Why are we cutting? Why are we increasing class size of the elementary, why are we doing that? And so I thought it was important for the board to gauge as well, what's?
Yep.
Yep.
What's the sentiment in the community, and to going even higher than what the financial stability committee recommended?
I do like.
If it avoided cuts.
Yep.
Cause I I think twofold, that's like when we asked the question on air conditioning, would I love to have the buildings air-conditioned, absolutely, but. The community's support wasn't.
Yeah.
There for that, I think it's important for the board to have that, if it came back overwhelming. Yes, then I don't think it will, but if it did, then maybe that gives the board a different. Direction to go, but if it doesn't, it also gives the board, look, we surveyed and we asked the community, and the support just wasn't there. But it could be, we might be surprised, I don't know, I know the city of Elkhorn. When they ran that uh. What was it, the uh, I I chuckled, it was on the swimming pool.
Oh, right.
Because they thought, well, let's put it to advisory referendum, because nobody's gonna support the swimming pool.
Right.
And the guy stood in the corner with the pool, and I would have come back like ninety percent, said, yeah, build the pool. Um, I guess you don't know unless you ask the.
Yeah.
All right, um. Does, is there a, does that make sense on the subcommittee, or do you want us to just put a draft together and bring the whole draft back for the May thirteenth?
No, I'd like to do.
Subcommittee? I'd volunteer.
Yeah, I would too.
Pull a point on on Adam, since he's not on.
I heard, I heard that.
Okay, so Harry Gordon would like to start with the horse call.
All right, then I think we have the information we need, we can give Katie some direction. And we'll put together another draft of that and then share that.
I have a question, this um, this one demographic question, that one right there, how do you receive school district information? Is that something that's been used in other?
It is, that's why it was on there, I don't know how.
Yeah, let's take that out, it's not super relevant.
Yeah, it's not real relevant, and it's, and it just, it shoots up a bunch of space that we could use for other information data.
Unless you were doing something with that information.
Unless you were, yeah, I mean.
If you were gonna do something.
You've used that question before, right?
Yeah, we have, it can help you look at a certain demographic group and see.
Yeah.
You know, but we use those multiple modalities to get the word out anyway.
Right, right.
Um, I don't know, to be honest, constant contact was really depressing when we lived with that, because. It gives you the stats on how many people actually opened an email on there.
Open raise.
You know, that are families, it's like twenty-three percent.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Um, it's, I remember I had a board member years ago who. He was like, why am I just hearing about this now? And we shared with him, well, we did the phone call, we did the email, we did the, there were five different ways, so we did the touch point. He said, and he was a bank president, the banking leader, and said, well, obviously I didn't get the message, so you need to do ten. All right, well, and that's always the question, at what point do you?
Right, that's, yeah. I I mean. I have four email addresses that I have to manage and look at every day, and I have to be very choosy about what I'm actually opening. Cause I hunt, you know, hundreds and hundreds a day.
And.
And I know everybody else is in the same boat.
That's why I don't send out regular emails, like newsletters and so forth, because. I found I get a much greater readership when it's sporadic.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of research behind that, but it's like, why do people go play slot machines? Because it's sporadic, it's a human nature that. When you don't know what's coming, they're more likely to interact and engage with it. Um, so I do think it's important to limit it and be. Judicious with when you should. All right, were there any others that um? We would like to go ahead and whack? On the demographics?
Um, I don't.
Um, if you go up a little bit, your primary residence.
Alright, that's exactly what I was, that's kind of redundant.
Yeah, just to move that because you're.
Right, cause if you're already saying what we were assuming is.
This is checking, are you open enrolled or not?
Oh. Well, would that be co- oh.
What we even have, what we have is my my student is open from Elkhorn in this, in the next question.
And that's on the municipality, which you probably, that probably shouldn't be there, because you could live in those municipalities.
Right, not attend, yeah.
Yes, may or may not be a resident of the Elkhorn District.
We will get some, some people will get the survey that aren't part of the district, just the way our mailing room.
Yeah.
So should I delete this one?
Or can you combine it with the first answer?
Yeah.
With the first.
This tells you whether, well, this is like all the Lauderdale Lake home, I don't know how many of them are second home.
Yeah.
And or are they from, uh, I don't know, that's why they have it on those surveys, to see are they a voter or not? Cause if they're not a primary resident, they're not a voter.
Right.
So if you live in the town of Delaware, then, but you're an open enrolled student, which.
Oh, so really, that should say in the Elkhorn area is Scottish.
Yeah, I'm looking even at the next question, Jason.
Yeah.
Cause if you're open enrolled. You could still be in the town of Delaware, and then be open enrolled.
Yeah, but then you're also not a voter. Cause if you're open enrolled, we can't vote, correct? And we can delete this one, I don't know how much it helps us. That's why we have it here.
Well. Well, it helps us, I mean. I would say the way it helps us is, if they say no, we discount their. We discount their opinion and leave them out of the results. Because they're not a voter. So that's the way it helps us.
You can disaggregate it.
And the next question, I'm not sure by having the open enrollment. Cause again, if you could easily live in the town of Delavan, and you're open enrolled, so which box do you?
Well, we can set it so they can.
Or, or do you make it a part of? Three, I don't know if people make it part of the three.
They're not in the district, they can't vote on this anyway.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, just take it out.
Just take the municipality out?
It doesn't have any relevance. Cause if their student isn't enrolled.
Because we'll get that in this question. And we're gonna reformat those two questions, then we're gonna add some more related to specific budget cut strategies. Do, are there any, is there any of this? Go ahead and.
The only thing that I would. That I thought we should somehow work into. The language, um, under the second part that Ed had there, is discussed by the committee, this deficit shortfall did not happen overnight. It is caused by the following, and then he lists that the state has failed to increase school funding. To align with inflation, inflation since two thousand nine, and I just wrote a note in there about mentioning that. That the state, because of the state's actions. We are now thirty three hundred dollars per student behind, and just take that statistic, but not necessarily put a. Graph in there.
It's just, it was too much to get through. But I'm just kinda summarizing it in more of a bullet.
Right, and the, the only, the only part of that that I thought might be relevant to. Wanting to include would be the thirty three hundred dollars student behind.
I like, I like the chart with this, but you don't like the chart.
I don't, I think it takes up a lot of space, and I don't think.
But it needs to, we need, you need a break from the. Cause otherwise, otherwise you're gonna get this and go. How long is?
In, in the first bullet point, thirty three. Hundred per student, or this much million. For the course of a year.
Okay, then, then leave the graph in, but that was the only, right, part of that that I thought would be good to leave in.
We can take the plague off the graph. That doesn't really have. That's part of a PowerPoint. It doesn't have any relevance.
It's a red flag. So this, take all of this out?
Score, all that stuff, people don't care about that, yeah. I know we care, but. Yes.
Delete all of those, right? All right, little restructuring, we were. Should we have a, let me go back real quick, I wanted to. I wondered if we should do. Should we have that at the very top? As an introductory paragraph to the survey?
Go, I think I have something like that. Right there. Just moved it up there.
So it doesn't need to be there twice, obviously.
You know what, scroll back down to where you, oh. In terms of order for the questions, can we put all the demographic stuff at the end? Oh, I notice, uh, when I take surveys, nine times out of ten, demographic questions are at the end of the survey.
Sure. We can do that. Kathy, you want me to go?
I want you to go, uh, a little bit further, stop. I'm wondering if. This paragraph and the one above it can be slipped, I don't know if it's possible. But this leads in with, hey, we did this, we looked at all these angles, and then. In spite of that, we're still coming up with it.
I do like that.
Yeah, and I don't know if it, you know, colon leads into this or not, I didn't know where the flow was, but I'd like to. That was one of the things that I, yeah.
I, I like it, because this really is a finding of that group.
It's a, and it hits you right square in the eyes, right in the get go.
Yeah, I like that, Kathy. Um, yeah, we just have to tweak that last.
Yeah, I don't know how to make that work, so.
And maybe that sentence is a sentence on its own.
After four months of studying, the committee made. Made a number, made a number of recommendations.
It stands where we could put in, you were talking about putting in the things that we recommended. Maybe that's where the, those items go.
How does that work?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I like key, I mean, we could combine these into one pair, but I think keeping them in small.
Yep, agree.
Something else that's really hard to do is, um. Even on this survey, if I check the, uh. Readability of this.
Oh, great, you have to be.
No, that's really good, because, yeah, I was gonna say, it's usually.
Yeah, you actually want it under an eighth grade level.
Right where I'm at.
That seems to be the problem.
Is written at the fourth grade level.
Would you wanna put the ball, you put the four recommendations that you had there, Ed, like closing the gap would be like involved.
Yeah, and, yeah, we'll ask her to dress it up.
After she's pretty deep out, she can send it to the three of us again, and then, then I can. Start looking at it again.
Will do. All right, no, I'm really excited on that readability of that.
I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes.
I'll third that. All right, have a good night, everybody.